Thank you Bob. My name is Charles Mott. I'm a Marysville native. I was born in the city, but raised most of my life here. I did leave for 20 years and when I returned, I found the city in a bad state and decided that I needed to start doing something about it. One of the first things we did was started a volunteer group and started working at Riverfront Park. Since then, we have been volunteering all over throughout the city. I attend city council meetings about 80 percent of the time. I'm on the Parks and Recreation Committee and we are getting ready to join the Yuba County Fish and Wildlife Committee.
Okay, thank you very much David. Hoffs.
Hello. My name is David Hoffs and I've lived in Marysville since 1974. I've been a business owner of my own painting business. For years, the city has drifted while the city manager and his administration have shown they don't have the answers and refuse to adopt an approach that will create a viable way forward for the city. Not in a position to develop its own initiatives independent from the administration, the council has mostly gone along and let the city manager run the city continuing its drift to nowhere. The turnaround team will have a support team behind it to help develop a strategic plan and assistance implementation independent of the current self-serving administration. The plan will prepare a list of initiatives to save money, attract new businesses, and shrink the current loaded city government. Re-electing incumbents will assure more of the same drift while turnaround team brings a new strategy to the people, the way to move Marysville forward.
Thank you. Stephanie McKenzie.
Hi guys. I'm Stephanie McKenzie. I've been a resident of Yuba Center for 35 years now. I raised my family here. Like some of my kids went to Marysville High School. I was involved in grant equity there. Various volunteer operations here that I've been involved with, a woman's friend and bring up my daughter, health care hospice. I was a chaplain for several years. I worked at Freedom House, I was the board secretary for 10 years and had a small business, small farming business out in Hollywood with a ranch and big stamp. Sort of been a small business owner, a community member, raised family and worked, kind of been in lots of different aspects of the community. Just recently, actually three and a half years ago, I moved downtown. I've been enjoying being downtown and I began to walk around the levees and walk downtown, walk around the lake and just I started praying for the city. I just felt the burden to pray for the city, pray for the leadership. And someone once told me that if you're going to pray for something, you need to be willing to be part of the answer. And so that's why I said yes when I was invited to join the turnaround team. Well, I believe our city deserves leadership that can work together towards a common rule with a strategic plan to take Marysville forward and to make some differences. So I'm excited about working together with council members if I'm elected to do that and I see our city view by my words again.
Thank you. Bill Simmons.
Good evening. I'm Bill Simmons and I would like to share a minute and a half about me and my qualifications as a city council member. Sandy and I will celebrate our sixth wedding anniversary in December. We have three children, Barry, Brian, and Melody. And I have two grandchildren, Gordon Winkle who just finished her doctorate, girl's son in biosciences, and my grandson Taylor. I was born in San Antonio, California and have lived in Marysville for over 40 years. I have a bachelor's degree in public administration and associate of art history and social sciences. I retired from the Air Force after 24 years of active duty in the United States Air Force. And I served both under Yuba County Planning Commission and Marysville Planning Historical Preservation Commission. Elected to District Two Supervisor, Yuba County Board of Supervisors, and Yuba County Water Agency of Directors for eight years. I am now serving a two-year appointment as a Marysville City Council. I am called what they call an appointed incumbent. I now serve two years appointment in the city council. I'm on the Board of Directors for both Army Health Corporation, Yuba Southern Economic Development Corporation. Furthermore, I've been working on Yuba River Water to Ellis Lake that provided by 1975, water contract with Yuba County Water Agency. In addition, I co-authored the citizen initiative tied to ground water fairness, the sharing with the citizens of Yuba County Water Service around the Yuba County Water Agency. My priorities are very simple, public safety. Is that a time up or is that a two second? Okay. My record public service experience and all the values and I'm a person for this job. Thank you.
And Valerie Tudor.
Hi, my name is Valerie Tudor and I am running for Yuba City Council. I do have a business here with my husband. We have been in the area for over seven years. We did live here years ago. Our children went to Kynock, my grandchildren go to Co-Block. We are involved with the community a lot. I've been on the assignment and trying to make Marysville a better place to do business. I want to make a positive change in our community and to make sound, peaceful decisions that will help Marysville to become a family-friendly environment where walking down the street should be exciting, where parents and our children can enjoy our parks and where shopping is done at our local businesses. I believe it's time that we take back our parks and recreation areas so we can properly preserve them for our future. I will work to stop the divide between the city and the businesses and the residents. It's time to stop making hasty decisions. It's time to stand up and rebuild our city. It's time to stop the careless spending and reckless spending. I'm here to make Marysville strong and resilient with all of us, hand in hand, to rebuild our city. And I would truly be honored to have you vote on number eight.
Thank you very much. And we'll have our first question. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each one of these questions. And Steve, we'll start with David Hoffs.
This will be the easiest question of the night. In your opinion, what are the two biggest problems in Marysville and what will you do to solve them? Please be specific as possible.
Well, the biggest problem is they don't have a strategic plan to run the city. They just, it's fly by the seat of your pants. A business can't operate that way. A business has to know what it's going to need to do and what it's going to take to get there. So we're going to develop a strategic plan with people that know what they're doing, with experts. And I would say the second problem is a business unfriendly environment. And all you have to do is walk the streets and talk to business people like I've been doing. I've been a businessman in Marysville for years and people have always told me that, oh, they're not friendly toward business. And I think, well, why doesn't somebody do something about it? So I plan to do something about it. Isn't my time up? I can't read those signs by the way, they're all the same to me.
Stephanie.
The two issues that stand out to me are the budget and the business needs. I think our budget can be handled much better than it has been. I think there's choices we can make such as contracting out, one, the police and maybe other services. Two, the police would be the obvious choice to go to the sheriff department. Other cities have done that with great success and saved a lot of money and not just like Long Beach and San Diego have combined their sheriff department for large, large areas and saved lots of money. We duplicate services with our, all of these services are already managed on the same capacity by the sheriff department, very easy change. The second would be business needs. We need to attract some new businesses here. We need to make Marysville a place where we give incentives to new businesses to want to come and start up here, to employ people here. So I think we need a way to make Marysville attractive to new businesses.
Bill?
Yes. If one sit down and look at what's going on in Marysville and what has happened in the last 15 years, one would have to be aware that the biggest problem we have is taxes from the city. Our tax base is very short. We have tremendous amounts of requirements and infrastructure. We have tremendous amounts of re-insating the public works, police, and fire. So the biggest concerns that I would have and I think the biggest priority is public safety as well as instituting back into the system the public works areas of making sure that we have sufficient resources, manpower, material, money, and time to take care of the safety issues in the city of Marysville, streets is one. And I think that unless we hit new revenue streams in the city of Marysville, recycling those revenue streams is not going to do it. We're driven that with a budget. We've come very close to not being able to balance budget had been for the money we received from the casino, $114,000. We would probably not have been able to balance that budget this year.
Valerie.
I think that two of the largest problems in the city are actually with the businesses in the city itself and then also our parks and recreation. Families don't want to go outside and they don't want to sit in our parks and enjoy our recreation areas because there are deferred maintenance. They're not being taken care of and we're not showing the pride that we need to. We've got to get back on top of that with our parks and rec departments. There are two main hires that come through this city on purpose. We need to keep those people here. The other is the divide that is between the city and businesses. The city's not all bad. I have to tell you, when my husband and I came here, it was awesome. It really, really was. And I don't believe that it's bad for everybody. I believe there's an issue with some things that happen, but there's got to be a better way to retain the businesses, bring more businesses in. And that's my focus as a business owner here is to bring the people in, pull up 187,000 cars off the highway into Marysville businesses.
Charles.
There is a rift between the business and the city of Marysville. Everybody knows about it. That's one of the things that is kind of dragging the city down. Seems like the businesses are being over-regulated and a lot of times it does take a long time to get a business license. We need to go through all the codes as pretend the way the city does business, streamline everything, give rid of all the over-restricting, make the city more business-friendly. And to tell you something, our parks and recreation areas, we're losing a big draw. We have the Yuba River, we have the Feather River, we have all these riverbank areas. We need to get those cleaned up, get that stuff going again. That will draw the tourist dollars in to Marysville. And once we get the business coming in and we can get the tourist dollars in, then we can get into our infrastructure and other things that need to be repaired.
Thank you. We'll address our next question. Stephanie first. Do you anticipate any issues with the new four-lane Fifth Street Bridge that need to be addressed?
I haven't thought about it before. That's a good question. I was picturing it, I walk on a levee there, so I was walking on one of the Caltrans people in the city. I'm not sure who was photographing the area. And I was trying to picture how that was going to come in. So that whole intersection where it comes in down on Fifth Street will have to be lighted, I think. So there'll be that, the cost of changing the lights and the whole painting area, there's businesses that are right there, so I don't know if that's going to affect their parking or their entrances to the businesses. So those could be potential issues.
Phil? Yeah. That will be a four-lane through there. It's going to be two-lane lanes going out of Marysville on Fifth Street and two lanes going back in to hit the state artery, which is 657. The only issues that I find with that is finding the revenue to make it happen. You know, we talk about all these beautiful things we'd like to do in the city of Marysville, but I think my colleagues, not colleagues, but competitors up here feel that all we have to do is wish this stuff and it's got to have money to do it. And that's why it's important we have a new revenue source. I think it was a fact that we're putting, hopefully putting a new motel, hotel, which is Holiday Express in that area, being able to direct traffic down that B Street corridor, Fifth Street hospital.
Valerie.
I haven't looked at the entire plan of what is supposed to happen and what has been proposed. I do believe that it is a good thing that needs to be done. It does need to be updated. It does need to have an easier access to come in and out of Marysville. But I, for what I'm thinking is that I, for the state that the city is in at this point, for the next four years that I'll sit on this council, I don't feel that that is a huge immediate issue. I think the immediate issue is we need businesses to stay down here in order to get the revenue. I don't want to spend something, I don't want to put the cart in front of the horse at this point. We need to focus more on what we have currently and what we need to do within the city with the businesses, with the parks, and with our citizens to make this a great place to be.
Charles.
The biggest thing I see wrong with running Fifth Street into four lanes is where the funding is going to come from. Because obviously the city cannot afford to jump in and pay off all of that. If it was all state and federal funded, that would be one thing, but with the state of the city, financial, right now, I can't see that happening, that the city could be in any kind of position even for the next four, five, six years until we can get the city fully turned around, that it would be feasible for the city to financially become involved in it. Now, if Caltrans is going to do it all with state and federal money, now that's a win-win for the city of Marysville.
And it... Could you repeat the question? Well, let's see here. Do you anticipate any issues with the new four-lane Fifth Street Bridge that need to be addressed?
Well, it's obviously going to be a lot of issues, but hopefully they'll be addressed by the engineers and the people that make the plans. If you mean that the city council has to address, I haven't heard many, but I'm sure that there will be some that come up. So my question, how to answer that question?
Next question starts with Bill. Marysville's working through procedures to license-locate and eventually tax to medical marijuana dispensaries. The city's in the process of reviewing applications. Some have expressed concern about the fairness of the application process. Does the application process do enough to ensure favorites aren't plagued? What can be done to allay those concerns? And will the city be enabled to handle the whole issue?
Let's take that part first, okay? Last part first is yes, I think the city will be able to handle two dispensaries. Our ordinance is very specific and very restrictive as to what could be done with these two properties and where they can be placed. Secondly, as far as fairness goes, the city council is not in that chain at the present time. There will be an appeal process if anyone wants to appeal it. So that's being done by the police department committee to screen the applicants for police background inspections and other areas that make it a very viable money-producing resource for the city of Marysville. I think that we talk about not having money to do things with, that's a business decision. That's what that was all about for me. I voted yes for it because I feel that revenue would be, would help us in our financial situations and our $635,000 a year debt service on B Street property.
Valerie.
I'm going to take the latter part of that as well first. No, I can agree. I don't think Marysville's for sale. I don't think that the money that this is going to generate is going to help Marysville at all. Our police is, are stressed enough. They can barely get to the calls that they're at. They can barely write the reports. We've already heard them at different times say that they are very thin at what they're doing. And to add to this, to the city, to dispensaries, you can't add enough police to, to police or maintain what we already have and really want to add to it just because it's a good business proposition, because we're going to make money. We're going to lose money. I really think that this is not a great idea. If, as long as the application process, I'm sure it will be fair. As Mr. Simmons said, if we're not part of that, then we can maybe make some changes. I'd like to see some stupid guidelines if these things are going to go in. And I mean really stiff guidelines that us citizens put together.
Charles.
I consider the night that everything was originally read, I've read what the city council had in front of them. There are a lot of safeguards, but personally, I don't think we should sold our city for money from marijuana is that, you know, it's not, to me, it's not something you want your town known for, that hey, you can go to Marysville and pick up marijuana. And like Valerie said, already our police officers are just stressed to the bone. Sometimes if you have a problem, you won't see one for an hour because they're spread so thin and the policing of the marijuana distributors, you know, it just, I can't see how we could even do it given the police officers we have right now. And, you know, I'm just, I was gifted from the start and I still hold that reservation that I don't really want to see somebody selling marijuana on our speed streets, even though it will be a confined area.
David.
Well, this was done totally against the will of the people and I'm completely opposed to it. I've been out, I've spent hours and hours and hours out to talk to the people, canvassing and I can tell you that nine out of 10 of them are opposed to it. In fact, there's people that I give a flyer to and they go, oh yeah, okay, I'll read it. And then I hand out some cards against the marijuana issue and I say, and then they say, what's that? A list against the marijuana issue. He had my vote. Boom, no. And the council has ignored the will of the people. The will of the people was expressed in the primary, remember they voted? I know it was a county-wide ordinance that we voted on, but if you look at the results from the city of Marysville, they opposed it. And so the council went ahead and did it anyways and so on. I think it was a big mistake.
Stephanie.
Well, I think that the process, it appears that it could not have been fair and I think that that needs to be investigated. I think that having dispensaries for marijuana in Marysville would be a huge mistake. I think it would undermine the health of our, the city here, our families, of our youth. If you look at the facts about marijuana, it's killing kids. It's destroying lives. It's taking a toll on the social fabric of every city where you find them. And so those are the kinds of things that our council ignored. I'm sure they did not have a lack of information provided to them on those issues and instead they chose to, even if the people had said they would like the dispensary in town, our leadership in our city needs to be more cognizant of what's good for a city and make decisions that are good for the city because they hold the responsibility for the leadership and watching over and guarding this place to make it a good place to live. And I am opposed to the dispensaries.
Okay, our next question, we'll start with Valerie. Let's stick with marijuana. It's back on the statewide ballot with consideration given to recreational use. Where do you stand on the issue and how's that, if it passes, going to affect Marysville's operations and enforcement?
I don't believe there should be done for recreational use. I fully oppose it. And I want, I really don't understand, I get it, I mean, I really do. I understand why medical marijuana is needed. My mother-in-law passed away from cancer and needed this drug to help her just cope with breathing. It was awful. But I'm also on the other part of this, we're in a city that is, that is slowly dying on a vine and the idea is to bring it back and revive it. We can't do that with everybody just smoking pot outside. I have a business downtown on Third and Deep. I've got people homeless down there that smoke crack pipes right outside my window and I call the police, but they're busy. They're busy. They're on another call and this is the issue. If we put these things in here and these people are walking around smoking and there's restrictions, we do not have the resources to stop that and we're asking for trouble. Marysville is not for sale and this should not be okay.
Charles.
I agree. Medical marijuana is saying medical marijuana is saving lives. People can say, oh, it doesn't do anything. You can look it up online. It's curing cancer, saving people's lives, making their lives better, but recreational marijuana, that's a whole different story. That's, you know, it's like having alcohol, only the worst thing is, it's studies are saying it's damaging our children. And I'm against recreational marijuana, I'm for medical marijuana, but there's a difference there. You know, states like Colorado, they have a lot less population. They have areas where, whole counties were dry counties. But as far as out here, I'm not for it at all. Also recreational marijuana is something that, you know, brings a bad stigma to you and to your town. If you have dispensaries, you just have marijuana floating all over.
David.
Well, I join the chorus against marijuana. Everywhere it goes, crime falls. And there's stories in the paper, at least every week, about home invasion robberies, burglaries, shootings, killings over marijuana. And making it legal and recreational is not going to change that. I haven't seen anything that has changed that yet. And so I know if it's approved statewide, what can we do about it? But I'm opposed to it and I don't think it would be good for Marysville. I don't think it would be good for California. If we're just waiting for a good, if we want something to make money, why don't we bring in prostitution? I don't make money for Marysville.
Stephanie.
Would you mind repeating that for a second question I didn't hear?
Okay. See, even I forgot your question. Okay. Marijuana is back on the statewide ballot with consideration given to recreational use. How's that going to affect Marysville's operation and enforcement? And where do you stand on the issue?
Okay, well, I'm against, I'm against it, legalizing it for recreational use. I agree with my fellow candidates here about the strain on law enforcement, the strain on families and children. I just completely oppose it in every way. I have, I was married to, into a family who was destroyed by marijuana and the recreational, calling it that makes it sound like it's fun. It is not fun. It destroys lives. It ruins marriages. It takes a huge toll on social services and the police. We don't need to add one more hard issue to our city by inviting us, that element in here. And so I'm opposed and I hope that it gets defeated.
Bill?
To answer the question was how will it affect Marysville from marijuana, because that was the question. And I think that recreational marijuana is approved by the state, by the voters of the state of California, it will definitely have an impact on marijuana in the city of Marysville. Why would a person want to buy medical marijuana when they didn't buy recreational marijuana? So that's going to have to be a consideration to the city council, which way they want to deal with that. And I think if you go back and research the initiatives on the marijuana, the passing county initiatives, Marysville was exempt from voting on that. We had no part in that. It was a county-wide initiative. We didn't get to vote on it. So say the people of Yuba County, Marysville voted against it, they didn't have an option to vote against it. But I think that we'll have to rethink that ordinance and make sure it's applied to state law. And I'm not really sure that we will not even have an opportunity to accept recreational marijuana or not. I have not read that in the initiative.
Steve.
Homelessness, as well as transient traffic, has been a growing issue for Marysville for a while now. City and county have taken action in the past few months to clear out the river bottoms. Presently, there's work going on to clear out the Hollywood area. What do you see as the important related issues at this point? What are the logical next steps?
We're starting with Charles. Charles?
The biggest part of the homeless issue is what has happened over the last 20 years? For 20 years in the city of Marysville, there's been an ordinance of no camping. The chief of police for the last 20 years, all of them have basically ignored this until it's become such a problem with their environmental ways, uh, set going on, people roaming the street, drug addicts, you know, and Valerie said she has homeless people smoking crack right in front of her business. The big thing is, who is accountable for these people? Is it the city? Is it the county? Is it the state? Or is it themselves? Because most of, a lot of the people who are homeless, it is because of their bad decisions in life. And the city, yes, we need to enforce the laws that are here. We need to clean up our areas so we have a safe city. But I don't believe it's up to the city to enable these people and take care of them.
Well, my understanding is that the city of Marysville did have an anti-camping ordinance, but I think the state invalidated it in court. And so we weren't able to enforce what we had at one time. But that's just, um, probably neither here nor there. I, I feel for the homeless and I understand, but on the other side, they do affect the quality of life. And, and they do bring down the quality of life. They make Marysville a less attractive place to take their children, take their families to, to visit, to shop when they're, they're smoking dope out in front of the, you just don't want to be there. And so if we want to prosper the city, we've got to do something about it.
I think, um, I'm real hard for the homeless, actually. And so I'm really happy to see that the homeless consortium has been trying to help the people who are in those locations and pushing forward has been successful in some aspects. I think that they've been able to get some people into school, some people in the housing, some people connected with services. And so I think the homes consortium needs to keep on doing those things and helping the people. At the same time, I recognize the fact that I, we're law-abiding citizens and so we need to respect the laws and the properties. And so I don't think people should just give the park wherever they wish and continue as they please, cleaning the water and not being sanitary. So, um, so I think they do need to be moved and I just believe they need to be handled calmly and aggressively and I think that's happening. So I think the next step would be to continue with the homeless consortium supporting them in the, in the transition.
Yes, we talked about the city of Marysville not employing with their own camping ordinance. Uh, there's legal issues happening right now with an no camping ordinance and we're subject to being lopped soon by the legalese, the legal community. So what we've done to help prevent, prevent that is we've designated two areas of Riverfront Park for overnight camping, not by putting up tents, but to stay overnight. The law, the Supreme Court ruled that sleeping is a right of a human being and being the right of a human being cannot have a camping ordinance forbidden them from sleeping. So we have to find a way to take care of that. And we have, we have a place on Riverfront Park that has, that has been designated as a camping area for these people. Uh, you know, the Christian thing is, if I might, we're supposed to take care of our brothers and sisters in some way, making sure that we don't treat them as second-class citizens. I realize there's a lot of empowerment there, but throwing them to the wolves, if you will, is not what we need to do.
Valerie?
I agree with almost everybody here. There is something that you said about the homeless. If you throw the homeless into what's going on in the city, there is a definite issue, a definite problem. There's no way to police it. That's the problem. And we want to just compound more on top of the police and say, oh, well, I'll handle it. At some point and someday, they will. The overnight, I think that's, that's fine. You've got 24 hours. You want to camp, camp. Now it's time for you to leave. I believe that the, I think you, the city, I think that, I think you, the county, we all need to work together to actually, you know, shake the bushes and it's time for you guys to move on. If you need help, we have help. We have resources. We have thousands of resources to help you. But if you don't want to be helped, now you have to leave. You must move on because it does affect our businesses. It does affect our tourists. That's why they don't want to stay. You walk, you walk Ellis Lake and there, and the urine and all over the place. It is becoming a huge issue that we cannot police with what we have right now.
Okay, our next question, we'll start with David Hobbs. And David, they just instituted one cent sales tax with an annual revenue of about 1.5 million dollars. Uh, the question is, how should the money be spent now and over the next 10 years? And is it enough?
Well, as long as we keep losing businesses, it will never be enough. And we've got about a 33% vacancy rate downtown right now. Raising the sales tax is only going to drive more businesses out, keep other businesses from coming in. So, no, it will never be enough. We'll have to raise it again and again and again. It's, it's not the right way to handle the problem. We need to prosper the city, bring businesses in. That's the engine that drives the prosperity of the city is sales, businesses. And that's what we need to do. We need some, a strategic plan to attract and bring in businesses, fill up those vacant places downtown with operating businesses that will create the revenue that we need to run with the city.
Stephanie?
I agree. I don't think it's enough or ever will be enough for the same reasons and, um, it's discouraging to the people and other taxpayers because the council is not willing to change the budget and to manage things differently and to take courageous steps in changing the way we do business here instead of laying that burden on the people by taxing them. I guess I don't agree with that. I think that the money currently should probably go into taking care of what we have. We haven't been very good stewards of our city. We just, like Valerie's been saying, the conditions of the parks, the conditions of the roads, there's no money for that. We need to take care of those things. It's important to the people who live here and driven on some of these roads of East Marysville lately and it's terrible. So we need to take care of some of those things, right? This money is not very much at all when I'm talking about roads. So we need to probably use a little bit of this money and maybe hiring some professionals to help us look at our budget and to start making changes.
Bill?
Well, I think the sales tax was voted down once before, the major W. People spoke and this time it was voted in, the people spoke. It was an initiative passed. People said, yes, we want to invest in our community. We feel we need to do that. This is not the safety of all things, a one cent sales tax, 1.6 million dollars in four quarters, it's $250,000 a quarter. You're not going to do much, but it's a start. It's a start to bringing financial solvency to the city. And I cannot stress it enough, and I don't know why people can't understand this, we need new revenue. The businesses in this community cannot sustain the fiscal responsibilities for the city. It's not hard to understand that. We need to generate new revenue. And I'm open to anybody sitting on this council right here tonight, to come up with ideas how we can generate revenue. All you got to do is bring it to the council, they'll listen to it. That's a challenge, you guys. So, yeah, thank you.
Valerie?
I believe that the tax money, um, I believe taxes, there's no, there'll be enough, unfortunately. I believe that that tax money should have been allocated to specific things, not put into a general fund where anybody could just call them and say, hey, I need it now. Um, I believe that that should have gone to specific uses. I think the budget, I look at the budget, um, I don't think it looks bad. I don't think it's awful. Um, I do think that there is some other cutting that we can do without killing some of our, uh, attractions here. I think we need to reinvest into that. Um, and as for coming up with some great ideas, Bill, I have a whole lot of great ideas.
Brilliant.
I'd like to show where the city and businesses can actually work together and create some revenue, where the city will show that they back those businesses and it works hand in hand. And when you can, and when you can show that to the public, 187,000 cars and they see it, you will know that the city and the businesses work together and it's a place that you want to be.
Charles?
The tax is a band-aid, that's all it is. Everybody else has said it'll never be enough. It's $250,000 in a quarter. I don't know what the current market value is to repay a block, a city block. 3 million? Okay, there you go there. It's $3 million to repay the city block. It, it's just a band-aid the whole summer until we can get in and start redoing the way the city does business with businesses, like I said before. Streamline it out, get the businesses coming back, get the tourists coming in. We could use that money in small places here and there and break it up. We're doing a lot of good and spread it out there and everyone wants to see. And I have a lot of ideas also. And they will be rolling in, and we'll be throwing up the legislation here soon.
Starting with Stephanie on this question. In recent months, there have been several shootings in the Uva Sutter area. There's a perception that crime in the area in general has been on the rise and there's specifically concern over gang activity. What's your plan to combat, to combat violent crime? Also, area residents are concerned about property crimes, vandalism, thefts, burglaries. What needs to be done about that?
Well, I agree it isn't. Well, we, well, the paper said Ashley's statistics are not wrong, but the perception is growing and so the crimes have been more violent lately and gang activity is bad. So what we need to do really is support our law enforcement. And they've been doing a good job, they're looking hard. That needs to continue. I think that communities need to come together, neighbors need to start working together. Neighborhood watch programs are effective against that type of thing. I think we need to maybe have some education about those things in the paper, neighborhood watch, other solutions. No, wait, there actually in the paper, I think it was yesterday or the day before, there was an article about things that citizens can do in a neighborhood to help deter some of that activity. And definitely when you see something more than suspicious, call your neighbor or three million, you can call them, call the police. We need to use what we have, the resources as a community to work together and inspiration of things.
Bill?
Yeah, at one time, Marysville belonged to Net5 and also a gang ass horse. They pulled out, Marysville pulled out from Net5 because it couldn't afford to, or actually cannibalizing through Uva City and Sutter County. They help us out as much as they possibly can to help with that particular problem. I think it was further than just saying, tell your neighbor, neighborhood watch. You know, it's getting to the point now, as a neighbor, as driving down the street and you look cross-eyed at somebody and they shoot you. And people are afraid of that. And not all the law enforcement in the world is not going to correct that. It's a cultural thing. It's happening in this United States of America. The gang issues are one, you put them in jail, they get out of jail, they come right back and form, form the same issues with the gangs. The problem is continue to monitor, continue to have police protection that can afford and get back in the Net5 to help us with the dope and also the crime task force.
Valerie?
You know, all of this goes back in hand, the question that you're, that you're asking us, just they, they all go hand in hand. We've got the gangs because you, because they're coming in here, because marijuana is an easy place to get it, to sell it. We're going to say it's okay. We were, I was, my husband and I, we're just a victim of, of a crime and a personal crime. And it, it's very disheartening. We called the police, said, hey, they've broken out the back of our windows, they've stolen everything out of our cars. And it's, it's a violation and it's awful. And they couldn't come. They couldn't come because we didn't have enough police force. They had to come later. And, and that's real disheartening, but we, but this is my point, is we can't just keep adding to this because of the almighty dollar. It doesn't work that way in our, in this little community. We've got to clean up and fix what we have. We have to take back our city and then look at bringing in other resources, the resources that we have. And as a city and businesses, we have to band together against these things.
Part of the thing is about the old gangs and drugs, it's a moral issue. A lot of people, they, the younger people, they don't care. Oh, lucky, I'm in jail, we don't care, because they know the system will let them right back out. Because their parents have thought, sat down and talked their, what's right from wrong, like our, like our parents did when we were little. The, the police department being spread so thin, yes, we need neighborhood watch. That way we know who's doing what. And even if an officer can't get out there, if neighborhood watch is called, then they will have records of who these people are that are doing it. And, and Bill said, we need to get back into Net5. That I keep a lot of the drugs off the street. In Marysville, there's a lot of drugs, meth, drugs ramping around the city. There's a lot of marijuana out there, so we don't need to bring any more marijuana in. But it's, a lot of it is a moral and a cultural issue.
Well, I agree with, um, with Charles. It is, for too long, we think that we can fix every problem with government. And this is a perfect example. We think we can fix, um, the homelessness with the government. We think we can fix gangs with government, with police, with laws, with jails. There is a limit to what government can do. And the social issues, government needs to partner with other segments of society, which is not being done, like the churches, nonprofits that are set up to work in these areas. And they're, they're much better at it than our governments. So while we still need the police department, we also need the nonprofits that, that work and try to get these kids out of the gangs, try to get the addicts off their drugs. It's awkward to imagine.
Okay, our next question, we'll start with Bill Simmons. Let's talk about the empty city-owned B Street property that has been proven to be a huge budget drain. It was reported not too long ago that a development company was assessing the property. What's happening with that and is there any hope for the B Street property? What's the best the city can hope for to get out from under the huge debt service burden?
Well, first off, we're not going to get out of that debt service. It's a 30-year CPO, I mean, certificate of participation. It started out at $7 million. They refinanced and it went up to $17 million. And so we're not going to get out of it. We're going to be paying that till 30 years and the interest rate keeps going up and up and up. So when we get the $17 million certificate of participation now is $17 million for the 30-year payout. Yes, there is interest in a part of that property to put in a service industry. Yes, there is interest in, in some other areas back there for high-rise, for business offices, et cetera. We are working on that, as we are working on the hotel on B Street. So there's 630-some thousand dollars a year of debt service on that piece of property. That's got to be paid, folks, and you can't get out of it. We've tried, we've tried, we've tried. There's no way. So what we need to do is somebody to help with $7 million, we can pay off the debt, we're out of there. That's, that's the answer.
Valerie?
Um, I, yeah, I, we're in it for 30 years. We got, we got saddled with it. We, that, that, there's not a whole lot to do with that property, other than that, other than we have a debt for it. If we could get some, a certain model there, if we could get some businesses on it, I'm not sure what all of that looks like. I know that there are some things in the works for that property. all of that looks like. I know that there are some things in the works for that property. That's all that we can do. It's, I don't want to say it's a lost cause, that's probably not the right word for it, but it is what it is at this point. But putting some type of business on it, doing whatever we need to bring other businesses in here, is definitely a priority of mine. And I know that the other council members currently are working on something at this time to do that as well. Bringing in other businesses will definitely help with some revenue, and we're gonna have to pay it, unfortunately, unless a really neighbor would like to buy it.
Charles?
I agree. We have to do something to get some businesses in there, get some development on that property. Otherwise, it's just gonna sit there and leave the city dry. And it just, it just, still, I cannot fathom how the council was originally roped into buying that property. I know it was a witchy, wacky deal from what I've been told of it. I'm not totally, got the whole story on it. Yeah, we have to get to where businesses want to come into Marysville, then we can get somebody to come in there and develop that, and then we, out of the taxes off of that, we could start paying, you know, getting that paid back without straining it on the city so much.
David?
Well, again, we're up against a limit to what government can do. Unfortunately, we can get ourselves into bigger scrapes than we can get out of, and this certainly seems to be a case of that. But just like the government needs to be in partnership with the churches, nonprofits to deal with the social issues, I would be so bold to say that this is the case to me. The government needs to be in partnership with God Almighty. Because I don't know who else can get us out of there, but he can. And that's my best hope. If you've got a God, let me know.
Stephanie?
I think it's a, that's a hard issue. I don't think anybody's gonna find a solid great answers for it yet, but do our best to solicit businesses who would like to utilize that property and use income from that to start paying down the debt. But I think it can stand for a great example of what not to do. And I think the council ought to be involved in speculation, and I think everybody's learned that lesson. But I think that, just like a house payment, you pay the electrician principal every year, you can start paying down a little faster. We might attack it that way, to give us a little hope. Dave said, pray, pray, pray for help from somewhere to pay that off so that we don't have to carry that burden for so long. That's just a lot of money going, you know, down holes. So let's just, let's hope we can advertise, we can advertise for businesses to come in there.
Time for our final question before we have our closing statements. And Steve's final question will go to Valerie first.
A group of proponents submitted a couple weeks ago an initiative that would institute a new formula for distribution of revenues derived from surface water sales accommodated by pumping water from the underground reservoir. The Yuba County Water Agency rejected the proposal citing legal opinion that the proposal would just not be legal. Proponents say they won't give up and will consider legal possibilities. What's your take on the whole situation?
Well, it's a very complex issue. I've heard a lot about this issue. I've heard many things that are rolling on currently. And I think this is another issue that is just going to take some time to get worked out. Every turn that has been made, everything that has been proposed, there's a roadblock, there's a legal issue, why or why not. And to be completely honest, I don't know enough about all of it in order to make a rational decision. But that is definitely one of my goals as a council member, to help figure out what it is that we can do about the water issues that we have here in the city and within the county and all of those water rights.
I agree with Stephanie. It seems like every time we turn around, you're seeing on the news where the state has changed the rules on groundwater. And, you know, it seems like every two weeks, well, you can't do this, you can't do this. What's gonna have to happen, we're just gonna sit back and wait until the state finally figures out what they're doing, get in there, dissect everything, and see exactly which way we can go, which way we can't go. And it might be two, three years down the road before the state gets done playing around with the rule that under laws for groundwater and transfers and things of this nature. And once again, like Stephanie, I don't know all the nuts and bolts of the whole transfer issues with groundwater. I'm just starting to get into it pretty good recently. But as a council member, I will make sure that I find all the right answers and get fully informed on everything that's happening.
Well, like everybody has said, water issues are very complex. And even the experts don't agree, and they're fighting each other in court all the time. So to expect us, the council members, to have a definitive answer, I think is pretty optimistic. But we just have to follow it through, and like we are doing, and get the best legal opinions that we can, and go from there, make decisions from there. It's not a slam dunk issue.
Well, I've been reading about it in the paper, trying to keep up with all of the different aspects of the issue, and it's very confusing, honestly. I am not an attorney, I haven't been involved in water rights issues, and so I'm obviously not an expert in that area. And I think that, and it's something I definitely need to learn more about, just how it affects us as a city. But I, so I'm watching, I'm watching with everybody else, watching to see what the legal experts in the issue can come up with. We said there, the people who are, we said there was an initiative that could get passed, but then would it even be legal? So I think that the people who are involved in this, you need to get it straightened out, and then we can begin to understand it a little better.
Bill?
It's interesting. The initiative that was put forward, the Yuba County Water Agency, after one rejection and put back to them, the Supreme Court of State of California said that's an ministerial action. They cannot deny that going for a title of sound review to be put to the people of the state of the county of Yuba. So we're addition, we're working on that right now. We feel that what they did by denying us that right, they needed the Yuba County Water Agency, the board supervisors, the directors, and the two-at-large, voted six oh with one absent, not to put that before the people. We think by the Supreme Court ruling, State of California, that's a ministerial action. You don't have authority to do that. Secondly, we're working on the Groundwater Sustainability Act. We are working with the water agency right now to make sure that Marysville, the aquifer that we sit on, is maintained by the city of Marysville, control the city council. We're having difficulty in Yuba County Water Agency now allowing us to be one. So it's all in the works, and you're right. There's a lot of issues dealing with this. And we're going to continue, we are going to continue to fight for the rights of the city of Marysville and its groundwater area. I know that a time's up, but you need to understand, one other thing, you did hire a water lawyer. The water lawyer is going to give us our water rights to find out just exactly where Marysville stands on the ground rights, and et cetera, et cetera. That should be coming forth. So we're not sitting here with our thumb, our nose. We're working. And I tell you, water's a big issue right now. It's groundwater initiative is something that the city of Marysville deserves, and residents of Yuba County deserve, and we're going to continue to fight for it. Just leave one quick answer.
Time's up, Bill.
I know.
Do your closing statement.
I'm gonna do my closing statement.
Well, I compiled a list of the, I call it the seven ways to drive prosperity from the city. One, raise taxes, because we can't tax away to prosperity. Two, through immoral activities like marijuana dispensaries and gambling. We can't build prosperity on a foundation of immorality. Three, with the homeless and the transients stealing everything, not nailed down and defecating in the streets. Number four, when the city is hostile to business. Number five, with top-heavy self-serving management. Number six, without wisely spending the resources that we have, like the police department consolidations. Estimating we could save a million dollars if we allowed the county to take over our policing, wisely spending our resources. Seven, without a strategic plan. And eight, a bonus, by lying to the public, the city is supposed to serve. For instance, the bounce-back plan, which has not even been mentioned because of such a disaster.
I'd like to read something that someone introduced me at an event recently, and this was part of it. She sets her heart upon a city and takes it as her own, carrying it within her. She stretches out her hands to help, and she lays hold on the wheels of government. The gateways of her city deserve to be admired. And I believe that our city deserves to be admired instead of mocked and complained about. Our city deserves leadership who will be vigilant and working towards her improvement rather than through strategic planning rather than her demise through careless decisions. Our city deserves leadership who will protect people and neighborhoods from enterprises like the marijuana dispensaries that would put dangerous burdens on families, neighborhoods, and law enforcement. Our city deserves leadership who will make decisions based on principles of reliable research and best practices rather than on whims and good ideas. Our city deserves leadership who is not serving their own personal interests or those of influential friends but serving the best interests of the community. And we're committed to conscious stewardship of our city. I'm one of these leaders ready to implement the changes necessary to turn Marysville around so she can face the future again with hope.
Bill, you can resume your discussion.
Well, let's move on, because it's never ending issue. We could go all night on that water. I want to thank Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce, Appeal Democrat, and my moderator Bob McConce for hosting tonight's forum. Outstanding job, you too. Appreciate it. And the wonderful audience for being here tonight. When you make a decision who to vote for, it might seem well that you would ask yourself, which of the candidates are team players, creative thinkers, experienced and knowledgeable, who can help lead us back to financial prosperity, improve public safety, safety and better quality of life? I suggest to you, Bill Simmons is that candidate. I want to continue to build on our strengths, our history, and investing in our people. We must have a say in controlling our natural resources in the future. As a councilman, I will continue to work for you. I look at this, Marysville Water Rights, Water Initiative Title of Groundwater Fairness, Back Marysville as a Groundwater Sustainability Agency, GSA, and restoring surface water pumping of Yuba River water into Purging Ellis Lake. We have a contract dated nineteen fifty-seven, and that contract goes in perpetuity and is not being acted upon. In closing, I do leave you with this thought. If you allow me for the next four years to be your councilman, I promise you I will always listen to your voice. I will continue to fight for better quality of life, and I will work every single day to make Marysville a continued growth and voting problem. I'm asking for your vote. Oh, by the way, I'm number one on the ballot.
Valerie?
I would like to chair the Chamber of Commerce and the Field of Democrat and to help us in coming by me here. And I was very excited to come. I am very excited to be a representative of the people of Marysville. I'm also a citizen here, and I want to hear your voice. I have the amount, I'm not gonna stop with anything that I don't like, that you don't like. This is about you. This is about our city. This isn't about five people up here, you know, doing whatever they want. I want you here. I make these decisions on your behalf. That's why I'm here. That's why I'm doing this. That's why I'm a citizen here. At the time, a business owner here, so we can all be as one. That's what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to be here to support each other. I need your support. You need my voice up here to help build, rebuild this city. I'm tired of the negativity. I'm tired of seeing it on the front page of the paper. Why would everybody want to come to Marysville, and it's all they do is root negativity. It's time that we refute the negativity. It's time we start telling the whole truth, not the negative truth, but the whole truth. It's time that we start putting wins on the front page of the paper, the wins that Marysville has that the citizens are losing and not hearing about. That's what I'm here for. I'm here to have normal business hours in this city when I'm elected, so you can come and see me. I own Tufus' butcher shop. You can come and see me six days a week. I'm there all the time. I'm here for you, and I would appreciate your vote on the summary.
Charles?
Thank you, Bob McConce. Also, I'd like to thank the Field of Democrat, Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce, Bob McConce, for this lovely event. Everybody has showed up. By selected into city council, I've been working for four years to get ready for this. I'm ready to hit the ground running. I've been being tutored by a couple of different city councils at different times. I understand what the city needs. We need to get our business back on track, bring businesses back into Marysville, clean our city up, make it appealing for the tourists to come back. The tourist drive, dollars do drive Marysville to a certain degree. There's a lot of things that we haven't been doing because the city doesn't have the money. We've started bringing businesses back. We've started repairing our streets, getting our parks beautiful so the tourists love it. I don't know everything about the city and its works, but I have a really good grasp on it. And from my construction background and being able to plan and look forward ahead and see a vision of what Marysville could be in the future, it looks a lot like the Marysville of the seventies, only modernized, when you couldn't find a space on B Street. You'd go to Ellis Lake on the weekend, there would be five or six hundred people hanging out at the lake. We can bring the city back. It's gonna take a lot of hard work, but with your vote, I'm the person to get in and get my ass dirty. Thank you.
Well, we've had a wonderful one-hour conversation. Thank you to our candidates very much. As you can see, we had about thirty questions to ask, and we're only able to get to nine of those. But I hope you can see what you might think of your candidates and how those candidates can move us forward in the city of Marysville. Again, thank you very much for being here.